Time to get into optics here. A two-part series on optics for the study session. And really cool stuff, we got mirrors, we got lenses, we got lasers, we got diffraction. We learned about rainbows in this. In college, I got to take a whole class just on optics where we played with lenses, mirrors, and lasers pretty much the whole time. So this can get very detailed. So cool, cool intro stuff on this. So we'll start out with some very easy things, wave speed. Okay, we know that that is v. We know it's meters per second. And we're going to use v equals f lambda a lot in this unit. Okay, speed of light. Little c also meters per second. And in this, in this unit, well, actually, I'll save that for the next part. Index of refraction. That is n. And the unit for n, it is actually unitless. Okay, and we'll, we'll share y right here. N is equal to c over v. It is a ratio of how fast light goes compared to how fast light goes in a vacuum. So this is how fast light is going in some medium, could be glass, could be water. And this is the actual speed of light. So you see, we have meters per second over meters per second. So there is no units, a unitless quantity, kind of like coefficient of friction back in Physics 1. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about media changes. Here is, say, the surface of some waters. Okay? And let's say light's going to go into the water. We'll draw normal on here. And we're always measuring angles and things like that in this unit. The angle is always measured to normal. So let's say we have a ray of light coming in here. And we know that as it enters a more dense medium, it's going to bend towards normal. Okay? And that's because of, that is refraction. So we'll say over here what Snell's law is. It's n one sine theta one equals n two sine theta two. So this could be n one. This could be theta one. This could be theta two, and this could be n two. All right, so the theta and the n's and those numbers always correspond to the same media. All right, and this tells us how light is going to refract based on our n values. So the greater n two, the tighter this is going to curve towards normal. All right, now the light can be going in this direction as well. So if we're shining light, say we're, it's a flashlight and it's shining up through water or it's a laser beam or something like that, when it breaks the surface, it's going to refract away from normal. Okay? Now, a very, very important thing we need to know at an interface, as we call it. Okay, let's say we're at some, some boundary and we're going to shine light in this direction. Okay, as we're shining light here, we need to remember a couple of things. There are three things that happen to that light. Some of it is reflected. Some of it is refracted. And some of it is absorbed completely and doesn't do either of those things. So we have to remember that. Okay, this is going to follow the law of reflection, which says the angle of incidence right here is equal to the angle of reflection. Okay? And we actually measure those angles from normal as well. So really, I should give you these angles right here. Okay, but for a flat surface, these, these are going to be the same as well. Okay, that's the law of reflection, always measured from normal. Okay, now this angle is not going to be the same as that angle because of Snell's law, what we talked about over here. Okay, but I see a lot of test questions that, that make sure we know that, hey, some of this is reflected, some is refracted, and some is absorbed. And we will talk more about that as we get into some of the material here. Okay, mirrors and lenses. Physics 2 is very big on multiple representations, as they call it. Okay, and here's what that means. They like us to be able to prove things both with diagrams and with math. And equation manipulation and all that. And so if we can do a diagram and that at the same time to prove, say, where an image is going to show up, that's a good skill. Okay, so we have this equation on our equations page, and it works both for lenses and mirrors. And it's called the lens maker equation. Okay, this is image distance. This is object distance. And the focal length. Okay? So the only thing that's tricky about this equation is the signs. And we'll talk about the signs a little bit. And those you just kind of have to memorize. So, and they're different for lenses and mirrors too, which is tricky. So we'll, we'll try and go over that so you know what to do with those pesky negatives and positives. Okay, so that helps us out. The other one we need to know here is magnification is equal to hi over ho or psi over so. And ap puts all of this in absolute values. Okay, the signs of all of these things can actually get us extra information. But just the straight ratio of these will tell us if things are enlarged or reduced. So we already talked about what these are. These are just heights. So if we know the heights or the distances from the center of the lens, all right, or mirror, we can get the magnification. Okay, so if the magnification is greater than one, then the object is enlarged. Okay, so m greater than one, enlarged. All right, or m less than one, reduced. Okay, or smaller. All right, so those are our two main equations. Let's look at some ray diagrams. You've probably been taught the rules for these. So let's, let's go over these, how to draw them. There are three rays you can draw in here. All right, and it, basically what they do is they help us tell where the image is going to show up and how it's going to look. We can do those mathematically as well if we know these different distances and the numbers. Okay, so let's do this. We have an object over here. And we've got a lens. So the first thing we do. Ray number one is drawn parallel to the principal axis. Okay, it is then refracted through the focal point. Okay, and we extend it like that. I like to change colors when I do these. Ray two is drawn through the focal point first. And then at the center of the lens, it is refracted parallel. Like so. All right, and those are the only two you really need. The third one, I call the ninja check ray. And what you do is you take the, from the object and you go through the center of the lens. And I don't usually draw this one on my page. I usually just line it up with a straight edge to make sure that I did the other two correctly. So if you see this, the center of the lens and where your other two cross, then you did it right. I'll draw it on here. Okay, and you can see these all converge at this point. Okay? So we will now take our object and we will draw our new point like that. All right, now for this, here's the deal. This is a converging lens. All right, a diverging lens works differently. So all of the rays converge at this point. This makes it a real image. It could be projected onto a screen. And if you've ever taken the sun and projected its image to a spot, you are, it's going to get really hot right there. You can burn things and light paper on fire and whatnot. Okay, so you know that that's a real image. This is real and it is reduced. Okay, if we look at our magnification equation over here, we are going to get a magnification less than one if we run the numbers on this. So we, we get real, reduced, and our third descriptor right here is whether it's flipped or not. Okay, so we say if it's upright or upside down. So this one is upside down. We actually say inverted. Okay, and those are our three descriptors we need to know for images. Okay, now the opposite of real would be virtual. Instead of reduced, we would say enlarged if it was bigger. Instead of saying inverted, we would say upright. Okay? All right, now let's take a look at a concave mirror. We are going to do the same, the same rules here. I'm going to take a ray. And we're going to draw it parallel to the principal axis. And then over here, we refracted it through the focal point. Here, there's no refraction, there's reflection. So I'm going to reflect this through the focal point. Like that. Okay, and I'll draw, I'll extend that downward. Okay? And that's our first ray. Our second ray, we're going to go through the focal point first. And then we're going to reflect it parallel. Through the focal first. And reflected parallel. All right, and our image is going to show up like that. Okay, now these rays of light are actually there, so this is a real image. It is a reduced image. And it is also inverted. Okay, so some tricky things here. For mirrors, if the image ends up on the same side as the object, it is a real image. Okay? If the image ends up on the opposite side of the mirror, it is a virtual image. Okay, lenses work the opposite way. Real images are on the opposite side. And virtual images are on the same side. All right, so that's kind of an intro to ray diagrams. And we'll work more with those in some multiple choice and in some upcoming problems. All right, let's do a couple harder ray diagrams here. And also clear up all the signs with the lens maker equation. Okay, so I would recommend you try both of these on your own first in pencil. So pause the video. And do both ray diagrams. Okay, let's check our work and see if we got these right. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to start by drawing a ray parallel to the principal axis like we always do. And then we're going to go through the focal point. Okay, now this is a diverging mirror. So what's going to happen with refraction right here is this ray is actually going to refract in this direction, which means we need to use this focal point back here. So I'm going to draw the ray in the direction it's actually going to go, which is up here. Okay, but I'm going to use this focal point as my, as my aimer. Okay, then I'm going to leave that one alone for a second. Okay, ray number two. I've already used this focal point. You have to use both of the focal points. So for ray two, we always draw through the focal point first, and then we refract parallel. So here's what that would look like. We're going to draw through the focal. Okay, but we're not actually going to extend that line. Once we get to the lens, we are going to draw parallel. Like so. That's what the light is actually going to do. Okay, now these never converge. So what I have to do is backdraw both of these lines. And we do that with dotted lines. So I'm going to take this light blue line and I'm going to simply do a dotted line back here on this side of the lens. And then with my dark blue line, same thing, I'm going to backdraw it. Like so. And my image is going to show up right here. So it's going to be upright. And it's actually going to be a virtual image. We'll talk about why in a second. And it's going to be reduced, it's going to be smaller. Okay, now let's also draw the ninja check ray. The ninja check ray, you draw through the center of the lens and to the tip of the object. So that would be like this. Okay, and you can see that all three of those agree. I actually use that third one as a check. Some teachers use that as a primary ray. Just a difference of how you want to do it, I guess. Okay? All right, so let's do this one. And then we're just going to talk all about signs and virtual images and all that stuff. Okay, so the answer to this one. We are going to line up parallel first, and we're going to draw parallel ray. But this is a diverging mirror. Okay, so the rays are going to bounce off in all directions. Okay, instead of converging to a point. Okay, so this one is going to bounce off lined up with the focal point. I shouldn't say bounce off, that's not really correct, but we could think of it like that. That's ray one. Ray two, I'm going to draw through the focal. I'm going to line up with the focal first. And then I'm going to reflect parallel. Like so. All right, now again, just like up here, these two rays are never going to intersect. So what I have to do is backdraw behind the mirror where light can't actually go. For that one. And then this one. I'm going to backdraw behind the mirror. And where they cross, that is where our image is going to show up. So I'm going to draw it right there at the intersection. And that is also going to be a virtual image. Okay, now I can't draw the ninja check ray for this one because I don't have the center of curvature on the diagram. But the center of curvature is always two f, so I could put it right there, I guess. And line it up and make sure I'm correct. And yep, all three of those line up. Okay, so that's what I always use for my check. All right, let's talk about all four of the diagrams that we did. And let's, let's work on understanding all the signs here. Okay, so we'll go back to the easier ones. Here are the main rules you need to remember. If you can remember these, these two main rules, then it pretty much takes care of all of the signs for our equation. Okay? Here they are. For lenses, the, if the object shows up on the opposite side, then we call that positive because lenses work on refraction. For mirrors, if the object, or sorry, if the image shows up on the same side as the object, we call that positive. Okay? And so we'd be plugging in positives for this here. Si is positive. And we'd be plugging in positives for si here. All right. Now on this one, our image is on the same side as the object. When that happens, that is a negative number. Si is negative here. Okay? Here, the image is on the opposite side of the mirror. Si is also going to be negative for this one. Okay? Diverging mirrors, you always have a negative focal point. Diverging lenses, negative focal point. Converging lenses, positive focal point, always, always, always. And converging mirrors, positive focal points. Okay? So if you can remember, if you can remember those kind of simple things about the signs, that pretty much takes care of everything you need to know when working with this. All right, now we're going to really test that here. And if that didn't make sense, hopefully it will make sense after we go over the multiple choice. So go ahead and work all of the multiple choice on this page. And some of those sign questions will come up. And we will talk about those. Okay, so pause and work the problems. Here are the answers. Started us off with a critical angle problem. And we haven't talked about that in the notes section. Let's see if you remembered it from class. Okay, so what we have to use here is really Snell's law. N one sine theta one equals n two sine theta two. And we've got this surface. This interface, as it's called a lot. And we've got normal. And let's call this media two and this media one. Okay, so what's happening at the critical angle is light is coming from down here at a 30 degree angle. So this theta one equals 30. And at the critical angle, the angle of refraction is 90. And that's really all you needed to remember from class is that theta two is equal to 90 degrees at the critical angle. Okay, now it's worth mentioning that above 30, if we go to 32 or 34, we are going to get tir or total internal reflection, and none of it is going to refract. All of it is going to stay within the media. Okay? All right, so how do we solve this? We have the fact that this is air. So n, n two equals one. So I'm going to plug a one in there. I'm going to plug a 90 in right there. And I'm going to plug a 30 in right there for sine theta one. And then I'm going to find out that n one is equal to two. All right, so you can do the math on that one on your own. Okay, let's, uh, let's go over to this one. This is a simple problem with the lens maker equation. So we are going to say one over the object, point three plus one over the image, which is what we want to find, is equal to one over the negative focal. Okay, and if you do that, si will come out to be negative point one. Okay? So what, what's happening here? This is a diverging lens. And we know that because of the negative focal point. So if we look at our drawing that we did here, notice that the focal, or sorry, notice that this is coming out negative every time we do one of these problems. Okay, and it actually always will for a diverging lens. Okay, and that's not true for a converging lens. Sometimes the image will show up negative or positive. This will always show up negative for a diverging. Okay? So here's what we know. We can eliminate these two because they have the wrong distance. And then we have to, then we have to decide these. So I looked through here and I said, oh, check it out. A diverging lens always has virtual images. Okay, and always on the same side. So right there, I was able to eliminate c and e. And diverging lenses are pretty simple because they always form those virtual upright images. Okay, let's go over to this one. Converging lens this time. Still using the lens maker equation. We're going to say one over f is equal to one over si plus one over so. Sometimes I write it reverse of what's on the equations page, so sorry if you're not used to seeing it like that. Okay, and we're simply going to solve this. You should get an si equal to negative 60 centimeters. Okay? All right, now let's check out what's, what the deal is with the sign. So converging lens, when we get a positive answer, that means that the image and the object are on opposite sides. Okay, so we got a negative here. And let's see, we were given that the postage stamp is on the left. Okay, so that means that this has got to be on the left side as well. Okay? So the answer is A. And that's what that negative side means, negative sign means. It means for that converging, same side as the object. Okay? Let's go down to this one. This is an interesting one because the sun, the, the object distance is infinity away, we might say. Okay, so I'm going to use this same equation right here. I'm going to say one over the focal. Okay, and the focal is equal to the radius of curvature over two. So notice they didn't give us f, they gave us r. And we haven't talked about that yet in the notes. So our focal is actually half a meter. Okay, then our, our image is what we want to find. And our object, one over infinity. Okay, so if we divide one by infinity, that goes to zero. So the answer is one over point five has to equal one over point five, right? So answer is B. Let's check this one out. A refraction problem. Okay, so you get this path, which of the following is true? Index of refraction is the same. Index of refraction is the same? No, that's not true because we have a bent ray here. Light travels faster in medium 2 than in 1. Okay, well, let's draw normal in here. The, the closer bent to normal, that's gonna be our more dense medium. Our more dense medium is the slower medium. Okay, so that's wrong. This is just pure nonsense and foolishness. Uh, D, the less time thing. Um, that would be more distance spent in a slower medium, so no. The answer is E. Okay, if the light were leaving from this, it would actually follow that same path. Okay, very, very, most important problem on the page right here. Okay? And the most important part of this problem is actually what they tell us. We have to remember this. This shows up all over the place. And usually it's part of the answer, not part of the question stem. Frequency is, is the constant, okay? Anytime you have a media change and light is going from this to this or from that to that, frequency is always the same. Engrain that in your head, memorize it, never let it go. Okay, it's, it's true for sound as well, by the way. Okay? Now, speed. Speed is gonna change. We know that very well because we've dealt with index of refraction. Okay? So as it goes from air into water, the speed's gonna go down. So that eliminates those. The speed does decrease, okay, because of the density. Alright? Now, we know V equals F lambda. So this is gonna stay constant. If the speed goes down, what has to happen to the wavelength to keep the statement true? Well, wavelength must go down as well or our equation breaks down. So the answer is E. Okay, last one. Um, I threw this one on there because it made us do magnification as well. So we'll do the lens maker equation. And you should get an Si equal to negative 18 if you do this. Okay, so I'll let you work through that. Then we have to do magnification is equal to the absolute value of si over so. So we will get 18 over 6 and that's gonna give us a 3, plus 3 magnification. Okay, so the answer is D. Alright, hopefully those helped clear up some of the stuff we learned on the first couple pages. Let's do this. Work on this problem. Do the whole thing. And then we will go over it. For our Name That 90s song today, we're gonna go out of the kind of the grunge alternative and we're gonna go into a little bit of 90s pop. So hope you enjoy it. Maybe you'll know it. Alright, there you go. Let's go over the FRQ. We have to draw a reflected and a refracted ray. There they are. The reflected is gonna be the same as the incident, 27 degrees. Okay? And it's important to know that some is reflected and some is refracted. That shows up quite a bit. Now my refracted ray here, I might, maybe should've drawn it a little bit more pronounced. Um, I gotta use Snell's law for that. You should get 17.5 degrees. Index of refraction of air is 1. Speed of the light in the block, we're gonna use this. And you get 1.99 times 10 to the 8th. Okay, much slower. Wavelength of light in the block. Okay, so it's showing up again here. We must know that the frequency is the same. Okay, frequency in the air is equal to frequency in the block. Okay, same. Oh, you can't see that. Okay, there you go. Um, so here's what we have to do. We basically have to do V equals F lambda twice. There's a way to combine these two, okay, by setting them equal to frequency and combining them. That'll work too. So what I did is I just solved for the frequency in air. And I have enough information to do that. And then I took this frequency and plugged it in over here for the block. So here is that same frequency plugged in down here. Notice using the speed for the block. And you get this and you get that many nanometers. Okay, so pretty easy problem with refraction there. And let's go on to something a little bit more challenging. Lab-based question. Design your own lab. I would recommend working on this maybe with a partner. And it's got some graphical analysis on the back, which we have to be very, very good at. Your teacher does have the answer to this and can go through it with you or post it somewhere in the classroom. Hope you've learned about optics here. We went over lenses, mirrors, and refraction problems. Next video segment, we will go over double slit interference, thin films, and stuff like that. Okay, see you then.